Um, you know, recording.
This is the Thursday, May sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Village Board Committee, the whole meeting, um, I have all the meeting orders, that's number real close.
Trustee Hallax, here, trustee listener.
Here.
Trustee Malopolis, trustee Adam, yeah, trustee Ruben, here, trustee Scott.
Yeah.
President.
Here, we are not live streaming this meeting. The video recording will be available on the village YouTube channel. Pursuant to the village board's recently adopted, updated public comment rules, because the village board's regular meeting is scheduled immediately after this meeting on the same night, we're going to have public comments only during the village board meeting, which begins seven upstairs in the council chamber. If you have comments on the agenda item that's included on tonight's committee, the whole agenda, I'll ask that you make those comments when we get the item on the agenda. All comments related to agenda items are limited to three minutes, which will be strictly enforced in compliance with pre-established rules approved by the board. I'll limit total public comments. Actually, we're not going to have an agenda. We're not having an agenda. We're not going to have to rid of that. Okay? If you are.
Busy day. I apologize.
Here, but if you are going to speak on a non-agenda item, then please state your name directly. Okay. So, next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty four village Glencoe strategic plan and update. And I'll ask our village manager, Bill Perali, our assistant village manager, Ben Weiberg, and for the first time, our CP two consulting president, Corey Forrest Flash, to present and welcome Corey.
Thank you.
It's a lot of alliteration.
Yeah.
Um, I'm gonna just say a few things and then get out of the way. Ben's gonna walk you through just a little bit. And then Corey will kind of set the stage for what we have planned on June third, which is our strategic plan retreat. And just want to get started by saying that this is a long time coming. Um, the village's strategic plan was last approved by the village board back in twenty eighteen. Um, I think Gail Listner was a newly minted trustee. Um, it was intended to be a relatively short-term strategic plan, about three fiscal years. And it was extended a few times. Uh, the pandemic was the first significant reason that we did so. Uh, and then we did it again because we had some new folks joining the village board, and then we had some new folks joining the staff team. And it's, that being, all being said, I'm excited about the opportunity to talk about goals and objectives that we will together work through and bring, bring into a new strategic plan that we will look to for the next three to five years. Um, it's interesting from a timing standpoint, you know, we're nearing the end of the comprehensive planning process. Um, that document is working its way through its final stages with the plan commission. You all talked about that last month. So we do have a little bit of a, a kind of a parallel path of bringing this, uh, bringing these two documents together, but they really do build off of one another. Um, and we'll talk a bit about that. Uh, the current strategic plan, we do have included in the packet, and I don't want to take any thunder away from Ben, who's gonna walk you through a bit of the structure of that. Um, but the idea is that as we look to the future, um, we're gonna try to find the, uh, try to find agreement on the path that as a village we want to take. The staff and the board together, um, working to advance goals and objectives that underscore our strategic priorities. So it's a, it's kind of an exciting time, a long time coming. I think we, we expected we were going to be doing this about a year ago. And then our public works and public safety directors both retired, along with a series of other folks, and we took pause, and I'm glad we did. I think it's a good thing for us all to be able to, um, have some ownership of this plan as opposed to inheritance and be able to, uh, bring those fresh perspectives, um, into the conversation as we dialogue further. So I'm gonna kick it over to Ben and Corey. We're gonna walk you through what tonight is actually a pretty brief discussion on this. Um, obviously, the third is a much longer discussion, but, um, it's a good primer for that. So I'll get out of the way. Thanks, Bill.
So to recap, then, yeah, twenty nineteen strategic plan. The twenty nineteen plan incorporated a new vision statement in the pursuit of four new strategic goals. The adopted vision at that time was we will make Glencoe the community that people choose to live, work, and do business in by providing innovative, responsive, high-quality public services in an environmentally and fiscally sustainable manner. In this vision statement, the priorities associated with the plan were apparent, focusing on the hallmarks for the village of financial sustainability, sustainable infrastructure placement, and community engagement. These coupled with the challenges of commercial vitality, operational effectiveness, and organizational development. Served as a pillars, served as the pillars supporting the final plan. Four strategic goals were set out and are listed on the screen. More detail and action items are included in this evening's packets, uh, which included completed, ongoing, and planned four steps. The first one, that governance goal, uh, served to evaluate and adapt Glencoe's governance structure uh, and regulations to best meet the needs of the community now and into the future. This step included community engagement, like the twenty twenty three survey, uh, rep review of regulations and ordinances, analysis of water treatment and distribution services, and engagement discussions about Glencoe's status as non-home role. Services and infrastructure focused on key performance indicators, staff which would lend to improvements to service delivery, as well as identifying mission-critical replacement and rehabilitation projects for village-owned facilities, some of which are being talked about now or are planned for this year, and working with the sustainability task force to create community-wide sustainability plans. In terms of the economic development goal, this covered the attraction and retention of viable businesses as enhancements to the diversification of the village's tax base, uh, to identify and evaluate economic growth opportunities. Uh, finally, staffing goals included incorporating these goals and initiatives into daily staff life to create engagement opportunities, advanced cross-functional training, built succession plans, and analyze long-term staffing needs. Additionally, this was to continually evaluate and implement changes to the village's work environment to make Glencoe an employer of choice. As mentioned, many of these have sub-goals, um, and initiatives that have been completed or are ongoing and are constantly changed. Uh, some are indicated as being moved up into consideration as part of this process in twenty twenty four, um, which brings us to today's update. In conjunction with the information collected from the twenty twenty three community survey, as well as a recent internal survey, we are here today to present some findings and initial reporting on the focus groups which took place, uh, last week. Please allow me to reintroduce, uh, Corey Flash, Corey Forrest Flash of CP two consulting. Corey has served in a variety of leadership positions in the public and private sector, including as executive director of the Wisconsin City Management Association, the membership director for the Alliance Foundation, and most recently as vice president of Strategic Development at Hope Research Center. She also worked in local government and jobs from, ranging from the city manager's office to as a nine-one-one telecommunicator in community, in communities across Illinois. She's the lead for all of her agency's projects and has worked with various municipalities and nonprofits in the development of her strategic plans. Joining us today to provide an update on the process so far, which will include some information and feedback collected from six focus groups held this week. Switch this page.
If you can just go right over to the third one, because you just did a very good job introducing me, so I'm not even gonna go any further with that. Although I was also the executive director of the Ely Chamber, there's a couple of familiar faces down at that end of the table, so it's nice to see you. Um, I am here today to, uh, talk through some of the stakeholder results. I know you've got a couple of other things on the agenda, so I will make it brief, but do you know that the information I'm presenting will be available to you afterwards, and it will also give you a focus group report early next week that will have more detail? With that, let's go ahead and dig in. So the internal survey was sent out to staff, commission, volunteer, and board members. We had almost seventy percent participation from staff. Overall quality of public services was rated, um, seventy percent excellent. I, we'd like to, when we're talking about surveys, we'll get excellent, we're together kind of the positive results, and ninety-one percent is extremely high. So, um, you're going to see a theme of that going through a few of your upcoming events. Go ahead and keep going, please. Um, what services have any need improvement? There actually was not, um, a lot here. Really was things, um, permitting process. IT services did come up, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. Um, there were a couple of references to snow removal, um, as well as a better understanding of where to conduct different village practices. Um, so that's kind of what we got there. Next slide, please. Uh, what three things does the village do really well? Public safety, customer service, and communication with residents was really the big things that came out of this. Next slide. How would you rate overall quality of life in Glencoe and yet perfectly? On this, eighty-nine percent, very, very high. Excellent. Uh, one improvement, uh, we have the, uh, greatest positive impact on quality of life, housing options, and we'll talk about that more when we get into the focus groups. Um, parking, which is probably not going to come as a surprise to anybody here, also came up vibrant downtown slash more businesses, and then internal communication. Next slide, please. Um, over the next three years, how much of a priority should each of the following be for the village of Glencoe? So this is just the three highest priority ones that I picked out, and there was a list of probably, uh, probably twelve or so. Public safety, financial sustainability, and infrastructure investment were the three highest. Next slide. And then again, if we're looking at the, the ones that are both high and medium, the ones that come to the top on that, public safety, financial sustainability, infrastructure investments are still up there. But we also then add recruiting of village staff, economic development, and including service delivery to residents. So we add those together. We're at almost ninety percent to ninety, or yeah, ninety-seven percent. I start doing math in my head. It gets a little scary, but bear with me. Go ahead. Next slide. I want to talk through this slide for just a second because, um, we talk about survey results, quantitative data really kind of tells us the what, right? It's nice to be able to say this is ten points higher than that. The focus groups really kind of tell us the why. These are some of the highest scores that I have seen on an interim survey on things such as openness and transparency, especially Glencoe being open to new ideas and ways of doing things. Local government as a whole, that's not something that local government is known as doing particularly well. So these survey results are actually much higher than what I'm used to seeing at seventy-five percent saying it strongly or somewhat agree that Glencoe is open to new ideas and ways of doing things. Next slide, please. This one is also a very important slide and is very unusual from what I have been seeing particularly lately. There is a lot of pressure on local government staff. And so to have seventy-nine percent strongly, they would apply this position again. Seventy-five percent say they're likely to stay with Glencoe for another year, and seventy-three percent say they would recommend working at Glencoe with friends. They have all those strongly agree. This is much higher scores than what I used to see. So kudos to Glencoe. Next slide. And again, now, if we're looking at this with a strongly and somewhat agree, again, that positive, again, very, very high scores. Eighty-eight percent, eighty-eight percent, and I'm doing math in my head again, uh, eighty-seven percent. Extremely high scores, and we're talking about retention. That is a major concern right now for municipalities, for local governments everywhere. This should, not that we don't want to look at that, but you guys are not as critical. You guys are not critical compared to a lot of the other local governments I'm seeing right now. Next slide. Would you like, uh, recommend village Glencoe as a good place to live? That big old yes in the middle of it tells you everything that you need to know, and there's a whole lot of reasons why. Um, but really, that was, was what came through with that. Next slide. Um, and then anything that you think would help inform the process? There were a variety of responses here, um, communications, building improvements. Uh, but one of the themes that really came through was to really focus on a few things. So to really narrow the number of priorities and to really focus on those um, as part of the process rather than trying to do too much to do a few things very well. So with that, are there any questions about the data? Yes, please.
In, uh, doing this kind of work in other communities, public safety was mentioned early on as one of the principal concerns. Do you find that people responding, that that is one of their major concerns, has gone up in recent years?
Absolutely. So if you think about what makes people happy with a community, what you like, what your community, safety is always the first thing. I used to work for a company that did resident satisfaction surveys for local governments. And if you feel safe, then it makes sense. If you feel safe, then you're satisfied with your community. Public safety is always up there. I will say no, and we'll get into this. I wouldn't say it's necessarily a concern because actually I heard in the focus groups nothing but extremely, um, there was a lot of support for public safety. Um, so I'll get into that in a, in a minute, but there was a lot of, um, very good feedback about public safety. Yes, any other questions? All right, I'm gonna dig in then to focus groups, and I promised, Bill, I would go through this quickly because I know you guys have got a lot going on tonight. So I am on a buzz through this real quick, other than to say, we did six focus groups, so we did two, um, staff, one of residents, one of students, a business, and then we had a combined of nonprofits, other taxing districts, and community of faith leaders. Next slide. Well, we're just gonna go ahead and go through this real quick, basically what you need to know is they ran about ninety minutes. Um, and it focused groups are really a way to get more in-depth, uh, information. And again, all of this will be available, so you are welcome to read all of this at length. You can go ahead and keep going. Next slide. How many people were in each focus group? So it all depended on the, the, and I can go through and I can, um, get the numbers for you. I would say that probably, yeah, probably forty-five, fifty total was what we, yeah, for the six, for the six, for the six, yes, yes. So these are the questions that we asked, and all except for the last focus group that I did, which was the students, it was only a thirty minutes, so I did not have a chance to ask them all the questions. I asked them the three of them. But other than that, I asked the same questions, modified slightly for, um, staff versus, um, residents, but basically the same questions. Go ahead and go. So Glencoe is like living inside a movie. Um, place with a small town feel, desirable amenities, a great, safe place for families and children to live. And that's something that, um, I'll be talking about a little bit more later. Real estate is really good, well-maintained properties, um, was one of the things that really came up. And that the village is a caring and interconnected community, and that came through in all of the focus groups. Next slide. Economic development, um, probably no surprise, but when you have a, a community that is completely built out, um, and you've got a great downtown, economic development is always a topic of conversation. So some of the things, um, that wound up coming up out of this was, um, you know, opportunities being things like the commercial district downtown, multimodal transportation, um, improved and expanded parking. Um, that was a big topic of conversation in several of the focus groups, maintaining green spaces, promoting local business ownership. Um, the public works site, they're like, oh, we see this big, all this salt, but we could have other things there. So that came up. Um, but they also talked a little bit about the fact that taxes are high, Glencoe is landlocked, and so there's limited, um, opportunities to expand that tax base, so really looking at opportunities for economic development. I do want to note that they did say the village is very easy to work with. That came out of the business group. That is not a normal conversation I have with business groups. So that is, again, kudos to Glencoe on that because normally the business group, I hear a lot about friction, and I just really didn't. What it is, that the village really tries to work to get to yes. Next slide. Um, some focus groups want Glencoe to reevaluate the use space for housing. Housing was one of the things that really came up, and there is not necessarily consensus on that. Some people think that, um, maybe there should be more multifamily housing, maybe some mixed use. Other people say, you know what, single-family housing really is what we should name it, because that really is the character of Glencoe. So there was not consensus on that. Um, they did note that rising property values do make ownership hard for first-time home buyers. And so if Glencoe wants to remain a, a community of families, that may become more difficult. Um, there were some questions that came up apparently in response to some, um, recent developments. Things about, you know, should there be a mix of housing price points? Um, apparently there have been some tear downs of houses. Um, does that impact the character that really having a different architecture style is one of the things that they endure? And so does that impact the character of Glencoe, and maybe should there be some protections in place? Next slide, please. Focus groups complemented zoning staff. Again, that's not a normal conversation for me. I'm not gonna lie. So, um, they did, they did note that there are some things about process and the ordinance is that should probably be tweaked and improved, but they really were highly complimentary of staff themselves. Um, code changes about moving service businesses upstairs to have more retail downstairs. There were some mixed reactions to that. Um, finding businesses that will keep people in Glencoe, one of the concerns was those tax dollars going outside of Glencoe and really wanting those in. Um, and I heard a lot about too many dry cleaners and things. I'm gonna go to the next slide. Uh, village services, um, focus groups universally noted that public safety provides excellent services and are seen as part of the community. And I want to stop for just a second here and talk about this. Your residents, your businesses, it is a point of pride to them that you guys have a public safety department. They appreciate the fact that they are strengthened and that they feel like they are better capable to handle emergencies as a result. That came through loud and clear in every single focus group. They appreciate the fast response times. They feel like the individuals themselves are responsive. Um, really overwhelmingly supportive of public safety. Again, not a conversation we often have, but public works was also seen as being responsive and providing really good service, including snowplowing. We all know, if you live in the Chicago area, snowplowing can be all over the place, and not that it was universally, um, everybody, everybody was, but by and large, much more positive than what I generally hear. Um, IT needs were a significant concern in the employee focus groups. So much of everything that is done is based on technology, and that can be a real friction point. I'm married to a network engineer. This is my life. This is my dinner time conversation. Um, that is unfortunately, I think, just one of those things as we become more technologically dependent, there are more and more phases for that to start to break down, and that it can be a real friction point. And that was reflected in the conversations with focus groups. Was a desire for branding to be a little bit done a little bit more, um, consistently. We also had an interesting conversation about communications. It used to be you would go, you would get a newspaper, and you had all the information right there. There was one channel, you had it, and you could go. Now, because there's so many channels, sometimes it's actually harder to get information because you can't get it from one place. And so again, not a, a good or a bad, but just acknowledged as a cha-challenge. Next slide. Village staff, just spirit of cooperation, interactions with village employees were seen as very positive. Um, again, not always what I hear when I'm talking to residents and businesses. Staff capacity was also seen as a concern. Um, and I do want to talk about that for a second, because remember those staff, those staff scores are really high. But at the same time, though, what I heard in staff was, um, there's a whole lot going on. You know, public safety, there's a lot of training needs there, and that can really impact ability to do things like take vacation. Um, workloads can make covering for others more difficult. Um, and so that was something that came up. Um, and then residents expect a high level of customer service from a person, not a technology, and that takes significant time as well. Next slide. Communications, I kind of talked about that already. No primary channel, just like everybody else in the world, both advantages and disadvantages. Um, there was, and this was an internal thing, just when there's changes in village, village policy, um, again, and this is like every other, you know, it's like every other organization, my communications is a challenge. Um, they were talking, they were about to talk about, you know, would a phone tree maybe help externally? That was something that came up as, as a possibility. And then, um, increased communication with, um, residents to help keep, you know, expectations a little bit more realistic about what kinds of things can be done on what kind of a time. Next slide. Downtown, parking, 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 heard a lot about parking. Uh, keeping downtown attractive and interesting to maintain character, displaying flowers, summertime activities. Um, I heard from the student group, uh, they really want a skate room, just if anybody's interested. Next slide, please. Infrastructure, roads are well-maintained. Again, not something I normally hear. Um, some public places are not handicapped accessible and sidewalks need to be widened. That was something that came up. Updating the public safety building, uh, being a priority. Stormwater came up, and this came up in multiple focus groups, uh, having some standing water at times when it rains. Um, and then sewer pipes needing to be evaluated. Again, infrastructure is an issue everywhere. Next slide. Um, I am going through as fast as I can here, guys. Um, focus groups, again, parking, parking, parking. Um, there were some suggestions on that, maybe some valet, um, that particularly came out of the business group. There was some concerns about safety, um, from the focus groups with speeding vehicles, um, some tension between bikers and cars, um, crosswalks, and then the two-hour parking, and that it should be monitored a little bit better. Next slide. Student focus group. And so a thirty-minute focus group of the A three students. They would like to see more smugly, small locally owned businesses, again, escape room. They would be very, very happy if anybody's looking for something. They're all over that. Um, sustainability is important, keeping those green spaces. Um, but also safety is important, and they have that in Glencoe. And I wanna, I've got a story real quick to kind of sum this up. So one of the students said, um, as we were going through, and he said, you know, it, he said, it's really hard right now to be Jewish. He said, I don't feel safe a lot of times, but I feel safe in Glencoe. Public safety, I feel like we know us, we are valued, we feel protected. Glencoe is a bubble of safety, and kids appreciate that. They feel like they know public safety, that they are valued people. Um, that is what is such a powerful thing coming from those students and not something I normally hear from a group of working. So, double thumbs up Glencoe because you guys are making a really big impact on the purpose. That's what I got. Any questions?
That was pretty good.
Just a few things, um, and, and I, just so you all know, this is the first time staff seeing this too. This is all new information. Um, and I, I see a lot of parallels, and we'll talk about this in some of the materials that you'll get leading up to our, our retreat. But there's a lot of parallels to what we saw in last year's, um, community-wide survey. Um, a lot of good things in there, um, that I think showcased that we did make some progress with the last strategic plan. Corey could probably speak to this better than I. She sees a lot more strategic plans on a regular basis than I do. But it's, it's a unique situation, and I said this back in twenty seventeen when we had this conversation on this strategic plan for the village board to put so much emphasis on the staff in terms of strategic priorities and goals and objectives that tie to that. Um, it has been, since this, when we, when we were sitting down to talk about that last strategic plan, we were anticipating some turnover. Since that time, we have gone through an inordinate amount of turnover, some of which was natural from retirements, some of which was encouraged because of legislative changes or people kind of making different choices because the pandemic made them think differently, um, or opportunities presenting themselves differently, um, travel to work, uh, all sorts of, all sorts of those things. And I think it's interesting to see, and, and somewhat heartening to see that, um, folks that we have on the team like being on the team. And I think that's, those, those kinds of things are what I want to try to think about as we're leading into uh, June third, is where are those parallels between what we thought were our priorities in twenty seventeen, what we worked on between that time, and where we still have some work to do? That, that doesn't mean we lose focus on things, but how do we continue progress? We didn't do nearly as much on the economic development side as we had thought we might in the last strategic plan. That may be an area where we think differently. I've had a couple of conversations with some trustees around the table over the past week or so and, and looking at some of the data from staff's perspective on the workload is heavy, the expectations are high. How do we, how do we kind of calibrate that, right? What are we making sure we're doing so that not everything is a priority? We may have to drop something or they have to reprioritize in order for that to happen. So this is really fascinating data and, and very helpful, I think, as we all, over the next few weeks, kind of percolate over our own thoughts and start thinking about what that, what that set of goals and objectives might be on a going forward basis. And thank you for sharing that story. Cory shared that with me on Friday last week. And last week was a complicated week. It's been a complicated time. I think we all see that. We've all kind of been feeling a lot of heft, the workload, the complicated place. That was a reassurance that frankly I needed at the end of last week and, and I don't know how you knew that, but somehow you did. And, and you shared it, but it, I think that's, that's the kind of, and I'm sorry Sean's not in here to, to hear it well, but that's the kind of story that is not unique to Glencoe. It's unique to other places, but we want to find where those stories are elsewhere too.
Be sure to write it down. So it shows up in the report.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I listened, you know, this is heartening. I love to say, oh, this is all because of the village board, but it's none of it's because of the village board. It's because of our staff. We, you know, it is excellent that this is a good place to work and a good place to have on your resume so you can go someplace else. But the only thing you can't do is be close enough to the greatest heights. And that's a problem. We, you know, we have lost some excellent folks who wanted to be closer to their house, which shows their good sense. But other than that, I, I want to congratulate our, you know, Phil and his changing team for making this a good place to work, a good place to leave from if you choose to do that. And, and then, you know, we have said forever in Glencoe, whatever I said to the guy that gave head of public safety thirty five years ago, when he came in, I said, you know, in Glencoe, the public safety officer is your friend. That's what we insist on. That, and that has been true for every minute. That, and it's still true. And people feel that way about our employees too. And we basically, we almost have the alphabet here. If somebody's, you know, their employees have gotten somebody mad, we just don't hear it. So yeah. So anyway, I, this, I'm actually sort of surprised because, you know, nobody knows who the trustees are or the president. Nobody knows. They only know when they want to complain about something. That's fine. So we hear complaints. So it's heartening. The, the people who have no idea who we are are very good.
And I should have said, the one thing is with focus groups, everybody is anonymous. I tell them that they just will supply, what happens if you stay here, I will not do anything that is individually identified. So there is no reason for that if there is a concern.
We can only control part of the universe here. And are we not also going to be able to talk a little bit about external forces that can impact us when we have a retreat?
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, no, that we will do. So next steps are going to be, you will get a full focus group report. I hit highlights tonight, but we will go ahead and do that. You will also get specifications if you want to look at it a little bit more detail and you want to run through it very fast. But I know you have other things on the agenda. So you will be getting that. You should have already gotten a communication from Cindy, my assistant, to set up an interview. So you should have gotten that. And then you will be getting in the next week, a survey, a slot analysis. Because obviously going through and looking at things, opportunities and threats, those external things are a very important part of strategic planning. Absolutely. And we will discuss those.
I mean, it's certainly, I taught the book, Glencoe Bubble, certainly wonderful bubble, but sometimes you have to grow up through the world.
Yes.
And what happens outside can, can impact us here. Thanks.
So we'll talk a lot more on June third. We're going to get you some more information relative to the details of that day soon as well. And thank you Cory for being here and sharing your very interesting and helpful information. So we'll try to afford more conversations.
Thank you.
You'll really get a gold star if you help us figure out parking. And, and solve our water issue. No, thanks for your time. Okay. Next item on the agenda is, thank you for discussion, the home rule issue. I'll add our deputy village manager, Nick Larson, to present.
So continuing on the theme of the village's strategic plan. As part of the current strategic plan that we have in place, the village board identified several concerns regarding the significant influence that the state of Illinois has on village operations because of our non-home rule status as part of formulating our existing strategic plan. And what that led to was the formation of a subgroup of staff that conducted extensive research about home rule in Glencoe. And we reviewed this in the March meeting of the whole, so I won't go through it all in detail, but just kind of a quick reminder of how we got here today. The village has been evaluating what it would take to move from a non-home rule community to a whole community. As our attorney reviewed at the May call, you can obtain home rule status by either achieving population of twenty five thousand or more or by passing a successful referendum via the voters in Glencoe. As we just heard in our strategic plan, we had about to be more than twenty five thousand people. So based off of the research that we've done and the conversation that we had in large, the direction from the committee was that we should pursue the concept of a referendum to move forward. So as we consider whether or not we're going to be forward the referendum in terms of timing, one of the things we wanted to talk to the committee about was application of the home rule in our surrounding communities and whether or not the committee should consider any self limitations as we move forward with the referendum. Because as we get to later in the presentation, a big part of going to referendum is going to be generating the communications plan. I think trustee listener outlined it, but at the last committee of the whole, that it is very important that whoever comes to vote on the referendum should be well educated on that. So one of the things that we wanted to talk through is would a self limitation be part of that communication? So looking at what has happened in our surrounding communities, what's very common is that you see the communities that achieve home rule status will self impose the property tax extension limit law. We are subject to that now. We have, we have to abide by it now. So for all intents and purposes, that would be kind of a status quo operation for us. There are exceptions. And typically this is passed by ordinance, but it's also been passed by policies in comparable communities. We'll go through that in a moment. And then other additional policies that folks had implemented, once they obtained home rule and depending on the community to be popular or not popular, was kind of as part of the marketing plan that you would have more flexibility in affordable housing plan, more flexibility in zoning regulations, and then it's a property maintenance codes and local adjudication. Now that has changed since the history of our research or we determined we could not do local adjudication here. We're very limited. Now we have more capability with that, but we do understand that as a non-home rule community will have, still have some limitations there. When we look at our surrounding communities and what they have done with home rule, I added Barrington and Roselle because they were just successful in more recent years in obtaining home rule status. So we were curious what they communicated to their voters. What we've seen is across the board, you can see in all six of these cases, each of these communities did self impose the property tax extension limitation. Several of them have exceptions for that. So what would be the exception would not come. Barrington, Northfield, Lake Forest, and Roselle, all passed an ordinance that essentially promised the voters that if we move forward with a home rule referendum, if it's acceptable or passed, the board is essentially promising to use and we will continue to abide by that limitation. Except if the village board identifies a bona fide emergency, which there's a lot of discretion in that. Or okay, thank you. That's good feedback. Steve, you're perfect timing. Or if there was a community initiated referendum to override that. Sometimes that could happen if you had a grassroots effort for a particular project or something that you needed to fund that you would override that. And then Lake Forest also adding exception for any significant loss in state revenue. And that was done far after they had achieved home rule status. I think they did that in twenty fifteen. And that was at a time when the state was making some pretty significant cuts to state shared revenue when it was a significant concern for them. In Roselle, they had other unique ideas of also promising their residents that they would evaluate, consider evaluating their vehicle sticker program if they could determine that they could stabilize their revenue after achieving home rule status. And they did specify certain dates in their communication. And then they also promised to stabilize their CIP fee, which is a surcharge that they're able to put on their water bills, basically capping the amount that that fee could increase year over year. So looking at what our surrounding communities have done and what Barrington and Roselle did, included in the memo was kind of an outline of potential options that the committee may want to consider in communicating our intentions of asking the community, should, should the village be home rule? Obviously, we could have the self imposition of PTO, which would essentially be status quo to what we do today in terms of balancing the budget. Obviously, there could be exceptions to that in terms of an emergency or if you wanted to consider any kind of reductions in state shared revenue. We could look at the potential elimination of the vehicle sticker program. Right now I have extensive conversations about the vehicle sticker program. We are internally reviewing the option to take that virtual. We're running a pilot program that's actually been quite successful this year. A lot of folks that are participating in it. That program generates about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue annually, but it also costs about thirty or forty thousand dollars to administer in terms of postage, staff time, mailing paper supplies and things like that. So that would be something that we would have to consider in terms of if, if you wanted to consider eliminating that, there would also need to be an alternate revenue stream that we would consider implementing to replace that. Or we could also, similar to how Roselle did, propose the stabilization of the garbage collection services fee or at least put maximum rates that that could increase to at least kind of smooth that over time. Typically, we tie that to CPI, but in more recent years, CPI has been pretty high. That program specifically is designed to cover the cost of the impacts to our role of garbage collection. So it funds our asphalt paving program and our special recycling events and things like that. So that, that potential impact going forward would be difficult to predict in terms of implementing a maximum rate. With some of these, if the village were to achieve home rule status, we could identify some alternate revenue sources. I know we reviewed these at the rate in prior committee, the whole meetings. The idea being taking those revenues that are specifically targeted towards revenues such as are a source towards residents, such as the property tax, the vehicle stickers, the garbage collection fees, and shifting those to tax burdens that would be more equally shared by residents or patrons of Glencoe that don't live here. Something like a home rule sales tax. I can tell you despite facing the grand every day, we have an inordinate amount of village employees that isn't the grand. So there is certainly contributing to our tax revenue. Amusement tax or a package lifer tax, which is something that we can't do today. But that would obviously impact in particular the beneath that is right on the border of Glencoe and Winnetka. So those are just some of the examples. I know we talked about those at length at a prior meeting. So at this point, I'm just going to pause to ask the committee, oh, can you go on to?
If you're gonna ask, can I just?
You can ask for feedback.
Yeah, I want to make one comment and I, this is not intended to influence you, it's just, I've had experience, personal experience in a lot of these matters. I just want to make one point. In almost all of the communities that have imposed some sort of self limitation or what they call home rule light, it was done in reaction to a very specific point of opposition or contention. I don't know of any community that, that did it proactively. And you're sitting here right now with a clean slate. I mean, you, you have some history in Glencoe of failed attempts and there may be pockets of opposition out there, but you don't know that that exists there. So we're putting this out there and I think the presentation was excellent. It covered everything possible. But I just want you to, as you, as you now think about it, be aware of how the others came about putting that self imposing limitation.
I frankly understand the emotional appeal of the self imposition with regard to PTO, the real estate taxes. Because I think that will be the number one thing to, to the extent someone goes, oh, I don't want you to do that. Why? Because then you'll raise my property tax. Will be the answer, I will bet. So I think we address it head on voluntarily and we maybe put in some exception for when the state keeps cutting us back or something, although even then, frankly, as a board member, I would be probably pushing to go ask the bill, you know, go ask the residents anyway personally. On the other hand, knocking, you know, eliminating the village sticker program or something else, uh-oh. It's, if anything, I want to increase the enforcement activity on our village. We're losing almost as much money potentially from people that aren't buying stickers as it costs us to run the program right now. So the other things I don't think are going to pop to mind to most people or, or be relevant. So anyway, that, that's the way I would personally go about. So look. PTO. PTO has not crushed us so far. Part of the reason PTO has not crushed us is because even though we don't necessarily need the money every year, we bump up because we don't know what we're going to need next year. So I have an idea for modifying. So, and I think, by the way, I, I take Steve's point. But because everybody has adopted the PTO limitation, I think it probably would be a good idea for us just to do it. So we, you know, that way we could say it just like everybody else. But I have a suggestion for modified PTO because what's wrong with PTO is you have to raise taxes even if you don't want to. What if there were a provision that said, PTO except if you don't raise taxes, you still get credit for what you could have done in the prior year. So that if you need to raise, you know, so if you're limited to, you're, you're not giving it up. And that way we wouldn't have to raise taxes. We could explain, hey, what we would like to do here is save money for everybody if we can, but we're, we're not going to get punished for saving you money if there's, if something else requires. So that's one thing. The other thing is, The other thing is. I remember from 1988, the, the, the big opposition was you're gonna sell $100 million worth of bonds to fund current operations and restoring all of your houses. And we need protection for that. And it, it occurs to me that, and I was trying to think, well, is there, is there some, because Home Rule says you're limited on amount of bonds and stuff like that. I don't want to have like a limited amount of bonds because that will be read as carte blanche to do anything under that. That would be a mistake. But could we say that we're gonna do a referendum for bonds for something that is not a core item? Almost everything we do is core items. But we had recent experience, you know, last year with the golf club, which not core. And if we could say, look. We don't use bonds for current operations. We use it for streets and sewers and water and stuff like that. But, and it's costing, you know, I would say to residents, it's costing all of us money to have to do it the way we're doing it now. We could save everybody money if we were Home Rule. But I'd say if we, if, if somebody has an idea to do bonds for something that's not a core village thing, which the golf club is not. That we would promise in ordinance that we would go to residents. And again. You know, I, I, it will not. It will not require a lot of imagination for residents to say, oh, you know, you just did a golf club. What's next? And I need to be able to vote about it if we offer this. So those are two things that I think we could agree to do. And I was, you know, I, I take Steve's point and I don't have a final version of this, but it just seems to me. If I were opposing Home Rule, I would hop onto those two things right away. And, and we could show that this is not a power grab. If we just said, you know, look what our, our neighbors have done. We've learned. We're killing.
If we can explain simply the public and so that they can comprehend the difference between a cumulative cap and an annual cap. And still have a clean, simple message. I'm in favor of the modification you proposed. I understand it would be a good thing. I am very worried about adding any level of complexity. Because people get all wrapped up in that. They don't understand it. They're gonna
I would, I would agree with Gary. Because you need to keep it simple. And I also actually think that small increases are better than keeping something flat and suddenly jumping the, the number up. I think that's a lot less, it makes it much harder for people to kind of comprehend and yeah. And I mean, I, I own a condo in a building where the board president said, you know, for eight years, we haven't increased our assessments. Well, then suddenly they skyrocketed. There was so much opposition. They shouldn't have been placing them up here. I mean, I said, what are you doing keeping them flat? I mean, it's that same idea. I think people are just finding it a lot more powerful if they are small and phraseless. I think it's too complicated.
Well, there, there may be, there, I, I feel like I've seen this. I, I can't pinpoint who I saw it, but the I've also seen the kind of other alternative relative to PTO where you say you will not increase PTO. You will not increase above PTO for operations. Which gives you some flexibility from the standpoint of pension funding or capital funding. But says from the day to day operations, which is 80% of the budget. We're gonna make sure we cap ourselves. We're gonna keep ourselves under that threshold. But if, if there's a pension liability that the state imposes on us. Or if we have to do a major capital investment in something. Those would be appropriate reasons to increase the levy in the course of a year above PTO, but not ever for operational purposes. Which is how we function already, right? That is generally, except for the pensions, the pension piece where we do have that kind of hard cap. And we do find resources elsewhere in the general fund. That's how we operate today is that those, all of our operating costs are always maintained below. But that may be another path that we think about.
Alright, so I understand the point. I do. My pitch is why we should think about this because it, it's, I would like to tell our residents that this is not a power grab. The argument against Home Rule is if they don't fix it, and my view is it's broke. Because we all have the privilege of paying extra right now. And that there are a whole series of things not being Home Rule allows us, all of our residents that are privileged to pay extra. And this feature of PTO is one of them. And if we tweak it. You won't have to pay extra anymore. And, you know, we could come up with some kind of, it's a little complicated, you graduated, but, but I just think that what I just said. That if the village does not feel that must raise your taxes because of rainy day thing. To save it now, it's broken. So anyway, that's, that's, that would be, what I'm proposing could be complicated. Have to think about it, but it would fit with what I believe is the reason or a principal reason to get rid of Home Rule. Get rid of non-Home Rule is that we are paying extra now. Let me ask one other thing. So I don't know if we have our our expert legal advice here. Steve, could you explain? Because I want to make sure I understand. How being non-Home Rule limits the length of contracts the village can enter. Because we, you know, we're busy. I feel like I'm gonna go talk to DuPage County. This is something that's like a 30 year, 50, whatever it is. How are we limited contractual?
There's a provision in the Illinois municipal code that provides that a village board cannot enter into a contract that exceeds the term of the village president.
So that means, that means I'm, in theory, I'm out in May of 25.
Correct.
So, so if we do a contract and it goes to June of 25. Is it, is it void? Is it voidable? Is what, what is it?
Voidable.
By the board?
By, the filing board doesn't have to honor it. Somebody can challenge it during its term as in violation of the state statute. And
And I assume the counterparty could say since they get to walk away, they're not.
Correct. I mean, then they get detrimental reliance and all sorts of, but it's, it's, it's it's contrary to state statute. But that state statute does not have a Home Rule limitation. That provision is, and, and as, as I've explained in all my Home Rule lectures, if the state legislature wants to preempt Home Rule, it can't. So the state legislature could at some point say even Home Rule municipalities are subject to that limitation. Right now it is not because it doesn't have what we call the magic language that says this statute shall expressly, expressly apply to Home Rule municipalities.
Alright, well. So there's a, there's a straightforward reason to be Home Rule. Particularly, and, and by the way, there are some understanding through the village of Glencoe has with folks where if they thought about it, they go, well, maybe not buying.
One thing I do want to add to that because I know we had a conversation with your office about this. For anyone that's wondering on the board that we do have multi-year contracts that might extend beyond. One of the things that we do in terms of the belts and suspenders to make sure that the ever recently current sitting board is aware of all of those contracts. You may remember every December. We put before you all of the multi-year contracts that we have and have the board re-approve those. Just, just to make sure that belt and suspenders, everyone is still on board with all the contracts that we have to, to renew those.
It's what we do with our firm is we've sort of created that, our ever dwindling population of non-Home Rules. It's gonna be a lot, but so that's, that's, that's our sort of effort to keep you safe.
But in
But it's a pain and it's
Well, and in the real world, it's not actually binding. Because i- in theory, in January, the village board could say we're in, we're in it for the duration. And then come, you know, May 18th or whatever, you know.
Yeah.
We're out of here. So
Correct.
Okay.
And who wants to deal with it? It's, it is, it is tradition, not ordinance, that that hasn't happened in the past, right? And so.
And bonds are, are
They're separate.
Yeah, bonds are treated separate, Nikki. There's express authority in state statutes that, that allows, that has you could have in some ways.
Yeah.
Because nobody gives a bond's opinion about anything.
Right.
So this
Can we go back with the We could also accommodate something that Howard mentioned, but modified version of Howard's suggestion is you know, not have a blank slate of our 10 years. We haven't done five years, so we can't get all such 15 years of, you know, of interest or percent on your property tax. But perhaps we could, if you remember the old those adjustable rate mortgages back in I had when I remember there was, you know, you had a rate that for the next few years, your rate couldn't go up more than a certain 3%. So maybe we could do something where you know, certain number of years, we can, again, not to make it more complicated, but maybe there's a cap for what the total amount.
It is more complicated.
It's more complicated.
The formula, it's more fair.
3.5%, they're just small numbers. They're small numbers and there's a few years, but maybe it's like for three years or something. We need to keep this so simple. People have to be able to understand that, I mean, if you're talking. And it just can't, you know. I think if people don't understand something, they go against it. And you have to give all the rational reasons. Keep it very simple so that it's understandable. And, you know, and I think we have processed that with these other communities doing something similar. Let's face it, a lot of people are also sheep and you know, you can say to them, look at all our neighbors. They've all done this and they, you know, enacted similar, similar restrictions and we're gonna be doing the same thing. And I think that gives them comfort. That we're not charging ahead and, you know, on private territory. So I would be a firm, firm proponent of keeping this a very simple conversation. Coming up with the really compelling reasons to do it.
Yeah, I too would like to try to keep it as simple as possible. I also have a philosophy of fee for service, especially for relatively well developed communities. And for those things that we can or may need to adjust fees for, I hate to have it count. This is
PTO level of what?
It's, it's a philosophical thing as well as a practical approach, but I think that's one thing. You, you just can't rely 100% on real estate.
PTO does not, has never applied to fees back in 1988 when taxes were tax deductible, you know. I, I always, one of the things I used to be able to say is if villages cheat by instead of doing taxes, they do fees which are not tax deductible. As opposed to taxes which are, but that's gone now. So fees aren't better. The only thing that's better about fees is if it actually is measured. Water is measured or electricity or something. But I, I totally agree with you, but it's not really about fees because fees are not comfortable. That's, that's always been the end around.
Well, I, I think to that point, Howard, you speak to the, the fact that even when I got here 11 years ago. And the salt deductions had not been changed at that time. It was very much the village's disposition at that time that we would more heavily rely upon property taxes than we would upon fees because property taxes were tax deductible. So it wasn't as big of a lift for our residents. I don't think that was always a, the best path forward because that led, as we learned in last month. To our water rates being excessively low for way too long and things like that. So you know, you don't want allegiance to anything specifically for too long, but I do think the point is a good one. From the standpoint of fees, there may be flexibility in Home Rule authority relative to the creation or use of certain fees that we do not have today. I'm thinking stormwater management fees, things of that nature where you, and many of our neighboring communities, Winnetka being a really good example. They're investing, you know, 90 some odd million dollars in a massive stormwater system. That is not all property tax based cash. There are fees that are built into that for new development, for teardowns. Changes in the permeable surface on a, on a single family lot. We don't have the authority to do that. We'd love to. We talked about it a lot. But it's not something that we can look at, but that may be a fee. That is, especially as we talk about teardowns, especially as we talk about trying to find ways to create historic preservation incentives to implement those types of fee structures where if you are doing something. You're paying for that, right? So I, I, I think it's, the opportunity for blend is a good one right now.
School gets a development fee and we can't charge
And we can, right? That's a good example because we'll have 29 new houses in the community sometime over the next few years and both District 35 and the Park District will get impact fees for those houses and we will.
We will develop something on that and circle back for this. So the other, the other piece of this, as we contemplate the community's direction, we can formulate this process for our referendum is timing. We aren't necessarily asking the board for a specific direction tonight or a decision on timing. But there, there are considerations that we need to make surrounding as they surround the communication plan and what that might look at, look like. So just sort of a recap of the referendum process. There are two ways to go about a referendum. Either by voter petition or by board resolution. I think where we, the discussion was surrounding, our last discussion was more focused on a village board resolution. The timeline that we would be looking at would be 79 days before election day. So that means if we are looking to pass or support a referendum in November. That would have to be adopted by August 18th.
Really August 15th.
August 15th. And then the exact date of 79 days would be a resolution adopted by January 12th, 2025.
I guess that's actually December 19th because we don't have a meeting
Until after.
Until after January 12th. So we're either looking at August or December for board action.
So the reason why that is important is because following the formal adoption and direction from the village board. Our communication becomes much more limited. We have some freedom in terms of what we can spend, invest and, and communicate as a village up to the point where we receive direction from the board to move forward with the referendum, formal direction.
Because it's not currently an election issue. Once, once we put it on as a referendum, it becomes an election issue and the Illinois laws regarding electioneering kicked in.
So then that is following those points in time. So you have to be very careful. This village board has to be careful in terms of being very neutral, as does staff. We can continue to share information that was provided previously, but we have to be very careful following those standpoints.
Can, to that end. Can you say, look, I can't, I'm not speaking for the board. I'm just speaking for myself personally as a resident of Glencoe. And then say whatever I want, or am I stifled from doing that because I have a trustee?
You can, but very difficult for the village president to do that because theoretically he's on 24/7 in, in that particular role. But trustees probably can do that. I'd be wary about it because there's such a very, very thin line about whether you're perceived as acting as a trustee. As I've told you, technically you are only a trustee when you are at a village board meeting from gavel to gavel. Or a committee meeting like this and otherwise, I don't mean this offensively, you're nothing. But
Nothing works.
There is a fine There is a fine line. There's a fine line and I, I certainly wouldn't want any of you to be the test case.
So as we started looking at this, um, considering it's May sixteenth, right? Uh, we started looking at the surrounding communities, particularly Roselle, um, and Barrington that have. Uh, adopted a home rule fairly recently to try and come up with some methodologies of communication. Um, this being a primary focus of the committee of the village board, this would. Um, come to the community in various forms, obviously social media. We would talk about. Uh, videos to help educate the community. There would be a mailer that would go out similar to how we've done with referents in the past. Uh, but because of the whole rule concept being, and it's complex, there's a lot of aspects to it. Uh, there is definitely a need for communication. So what I've asked Sammy to do. Is to take a look at the different timelines of elections and put together kind of a draft communication plan. Of what that may look like. Uh, one caveat that we do want to kind of. Talk to the board about before we drive, dive into the draft plan. Um, is your own involvement in some of these things, uh, because we've incorporated events such as, um, coffee with the boards. There may be, uh, video recordings with Phil interviewing you. Um, so there is going to be, you know, some. Commitment on your part, which is why we want to have this conversation. Keeping your own mind as well as we look at the calendar. Uh, so I'll turn it over to Sammy to just kind of.
Before you start, I probably have one quick. So you're, we're guessing about what the right time to do it is. But I think the time to do it is November. In part because I don't want it to appear that the village is hiding. I don't want to stash this important vote at a low turnout vote. I just think that looks bad. November is, everybody's voting in November. Everybody that votes is gonna vote. So I think November is better. There's, there's a problem, you know, the Park District is also has a referendum, but I think. Uh, I think they're okay, you know, some people vote. So I like November. I think that's a better idea. So my question for you. Can and do. Can we do? If the answer is yes, then I think we should do November. If the answer is no. Then it's sort of academic. Can you do?
Answer's yes in both scenarios.
Okay.
Now we're running faster than the other.
Yeah, I think it comes down to speed.
Yes.
It's easy for me, apparently, based on Steve's advice, it's easy for me to say. Speed and rush because I get to rest after October and then somebody else picks up the time. But if we can do it, I'm for it.
That is a complete power that I, I failed to mention earlier. You'll send us in the timeline is that we're essentially trying to wrap up kind of this communication campaign. Uh, not by election day, but by the time that early voting starts. Because we want to make sure that we've gotten all the information out for everyone as soon as they're. Hand it off to Sammy.
Honestly, I think he stole most of what I was gonna say. But I think just the timeline just shows you perhaps where that, that green line is, where the board is adopting a resolution and what. Kind of the amount of time we have prior to that to, uh, developing materials that we have to pay for print. So we want to do a mailer in October. That actually has to be done in May or prior to that August date. Uh, so that we're not in violation of any electioneering. So there's a lot of prep work that would need to be done in the next three to four months. Uh, to make sure we have our messaging sorted out and everyone's educated. Um, and then especially the next important date would be that early voting date. So we really want to make sure that everything is polished and good to go for election day.
Can we go to school on the golf thing? Just did it with the golf thing.
Well, it's a little different, I would say. Um, this is a much more intensive. Um, information gathering and sharing effort than we've ever done. For a referendum, at least the three, um, that have happened, uh, since I have been here. So, um, I think when we, when we look back to what we've done most recently, so the. The golf club referendum was our last one, was last, last spring. You know, the village created a webpage, um, comprehensive, lots of information. Um, and then created really a single mailer that we shared with the community. Um, there were certainly, uh, there was information that had been kind of talked about and generated over time. Um, that led to that, but the, but the work that the village did was much less than what we're talking about here. A lot of what, as, as Nikki and Sammy have said, that we're talking about here is kind of looking at what successful campaigns have been. In other communities, um, Roselle particularly, um, most recently just this past March. So, um. That's why there's so much more than what we've typically done. For instance, we've almost never had. A, just like a forum discussion about a referendum question. Because they're pretty straightforward, the golf club being kind of the exception to that rule. Um, when you're talking about stormwater, you're talking about, um, streets. I mean, right? It's kind of easy to explain, easy to understand. It's ten million bucks. This is how much we think we're gonna do. So this, on the other hand, as we've just talked about. Can be very complex, at least in some people's minds. And so that's why we, we're talking about a, a longer. Uh, lead up to whichever date that the ultimately, that the board ultimately submits.
So this is if we're looking at an April first, um, the front question, we would have up until. December nineteenth essentially to, we will start educating the public for that, but will we have more time to build out more. For our, um, strategy and messaging and bringing in your board. Uh, and like Nikki said before, just to impart, um. Your own schedules because there will be participation from you guys in the forums and. In any of the videos that we might want to produce, so.
For those new questions to timing wise, like from just not the, not only just the gravity. Um, even though you do have more time with April, you do have. Time to lose folks over the holiday season and then there's going to be our vacation that has to happen too. So there's pros and cons to, to both timings.
Question, are, are we gonna need any special outside help for this?
I do anticipate we're gonna need a little bit of support, um, up until the kind of drop dead date. Um, some communication support, pretty, pretty much from the standpoint of, um, idea development and. A kind of creation of some of the, the physical pieces and the, the electronic pieces.
Is there a group that's contemplated to be formed in the same sense that, you know, friends of the golf club and.
If there is one, it wouldn't be one that we would necessarily be facilitating there, there. I know there have been some conversations already. Um, with interested parties, people who have an awareness and understanding of, of home rule and the benefits of it. Um, I think that would be kind of supplemental to what we'd be doing. Anything that they'd be doing would really be probably. Using the information that the village generates and then repurposing that, um, as it goes out.
Similar to the French.
Similar to, yeah, very similar.
Do that focus members go out? You know, uh, you know, in favor of such things.
Absolutely. They're not gonna elect.
But so. Can, can, uh, folks that are subsidiary boards and commissions?
Yes.
Okay, just, just, it's just me. Okay, alright.
So I'm just wondering, um, have you seen examples like where there have been. At the same time and what, what the record has been in terms of, you know, passage or not.
I, I suppose we can find that out, but I, I don't.
I'm just curious, yeah. If it's, if it's a lot to digest.
Yeah, we can certainly look, um. And see if there are other examples and it may not be home rule and something else. It may be just two, you know, corresponding, um, referenda. I think one way or another, uh, regardless of whichever timeline we're talking about, we're getting started right away, right? We, we don't want to lose any time, um, and that may be something that's still is a. A, a component of the board's consideration over the next few months, right? Especially if we're having some of these conversations, these discussions, you may be hearing from constituents saying, yeah, what is this? And what, what do we need and why? And, and that may help advise. Even how we build out the communications that are, um, that the village is creating. Um, so that's something we can look to and, and certainly try to find, um, similar circumstances.
I mean, since, since the Park District is already starred.
Yeah. Yeah. That's a good question. Yeah, that's a good question.
And, and there is a lot of confusion in the community about the relationship between the Park District and village.
It's true, all true. But, you know, there's always something that, there's always something that's gonna happen around any of this. We're guessing. Nobody knows. We're guessing. I, I think the best reason to do November is because we're not hiding. Uh, what I don't want to do is what, um, you know, how Republicans did when they, you know. They had a referendum and they said, well, when is it? When is everybody out of town? You know, what's, what? I don't want to do that. I want this to be totally transparent. You're going to vote anyway. You're there. We want your vote. I just think that's better specifics.
It'll be good then to just kind of get going.
Yes.
Uh, so regardless of the dates, we just, we start rolling and getting the stuff posted and put together and we'll get, you know, look, we're still looking at June eighth. As really kind of a, a first opportunity for some of you to be participants in that, but, um, there's gonna be. We'll do some, we'll just start putting it together.
That's, I, that's what I think. Anybody can, they will be one. That's good.
I personally would rather do April because I, I'd rather have the people that really care about going for it. But again, I don't. You can make either argument pretty. I can make either.
I, I don't know what's right or.
I could also say that being with or without the, the, the Park District is, is bigger than that too. Do we know their plan is definitive?
Yes.
I, yeah. I mean, I think that the message that it's, you know, they're still considering, but what we've heard is that they're, they're most likely. Almost, almost guaranteed to be moving forward.
They started their whole outreach program on that.
Yeah, a public meeting this, uh, but I got on my forum on Monday. Um, and they sent out a mailer a couple of weeks ago. I'm sorry? I think it's, uh, it totals out at like fourteen point seven million. Um, it's, what they're seeking to do is kind of maintain.
Re-up.
Their levy, yeah. Their debt service levy. Alright, well, we've got work to do. We'll, we'll get to work.
Okay. Is there any other business? We have six minutes before next week. Is there any other business? And if not, is there a motion to adjourn? The movement seconded all in favor of adjourned.